I'm going to call this city council work session to order. Today is April 7th, 2021. It is 6:00 PM and I am Mayor Julia Johnson. It's not on the agenda, but I am asking everyone to stand with me to say the flag salute. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. And I will do roll call. I'll begin with Councilman Glenn Allen.
President.
Councilman Carl DeYoung.
President.
Councilwoman Joellen Kestie.
Present.
Councilman Kevin Loy.
Here.
Councilman Brendan McGoughan.
President.
And Councilman Chuck Owen.
President.
Excellent. All right. Thank you. So I want to welcome everybody tonight and especially our three candidates, Sarah Diamond, Tina Tate, and Richard Waits. And we are going to begin tonight with Tina Tate. Each candidate will have three minutes to make a statement. And then afterwards, the council will ask a question. And the questions that we have listed are four questions. So we're going to do a round robin. So, you know, for those of you council members who don't have a chance to ask the first candidate, you'll be asking the question of probably the second and the third candidate. So kind of hang with me as we, as we do this. And we will move forward. Are there any questions? Let me start with that. Okay, hearing none. We will begin with Tina Tate. Welcome, Tina.
Thank you. Good evening, esteemed Mayor Johnson and city council members. Thank you very much for hosting this and considering each of the candidates tonight. I'm sure you will make an excellent decision. Why do I want to be a council member? I believe that this city is a great place to live. It's a beautiful city. It's a unique gem in Skagit County. It's up and coming and has a lot of potential, but as I said, it is unique. So we must keep those unique things about it in mind. I want to serve in the community that I live in. I am about service. I serve Skagit County on a larger basis and I really want to serve Cedar Woolley as well. I want to make, help make the growth in this community sustainable with a balance of affordable housing and businesses to support the city services. Why would I be a good fit? I'm a good problem solver. I'm a decisive and strategic thinker. I'm a big picture visionary. I like to get things done. I believe in working collaboratively and as a United General Hospital District 304 Commissioner, I already have the health and wellbeing of the citizens in mind. For these reasons, I am asking for your vote to seat me as the Ward Three City Council member. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tina. So I will just be going down the line, the same order as I did roll call. And you have the questions in front of you, which in the application, I think the three of you did see that it said, come prepared to discuss. I realized Tina that you probably already kind of answered the first one, but maybe you'll want to go into more depth. But I will begin with you, Glenn Allen. Can you ask the first question of Tina?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Tina, do you want to serve on the city council because of a particular local issue on which you want to work? Or are you interest, are your interests more broadly distributed?
I think my interests are more broadly distributed. However, one of the things that I commend the city on doing, and I've noticed a lot of, is growth in housing. You have some great things coming to Cedar Woolley, the Swift Center, et cetera. And I really want to be involved in the process of figuring out how to make this a sustainable growth. I've seen it done wrong in other cities and I really just am wanting to serve the community I live in.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Carl DeYoung, question two. I don't know that Carl is there. Carla, you're still on mute. Okay, I'll move on to Councilwoman Joellen. Yes, you're unmuted now.
Okay, thank you. So my question for the candidates is based upon your background and experience, how would you improve the base workforce in Cedar Woolley? And how would you ensure that we are working for a higher standard for all good jobs and benefits?
Excellent question. And I'd just like to point out that there's a lot of pressure going first. So if I can have just a second to think about that, and can I have you repeat that question for me?
Yeah, based upon your background and experience, how would you, this is an economic development question, how would you improve the base workforce to help ensure that we are working for a higher standard with benefits and wages?
Thank you very much. I think that there are already some things happening that really boost the level of what can be offered in Cedar Woolley as far as wages and benefits, the installation of the Swift Center. I think really building business, encouraging and helping small businesses and business owners, and bringing some larger businesses into the city will help ensure that we can increase the wages and benefits for people while increasing the tax base. And that really is going to be key in making this sustainable growth happen and ensuring that the people that live in Cedar Woolley have the opportunity to make the wages that they will need to live here. And I hope that answered the question well enough.
Thank you, Tina. And then moving on to question for Joellen.
Okay, what experiences, talents, or skills do you bring to the council and community that you would like to highlight?
One of the things I've already mentioned as a hospital district 304 Commissioner, I've gotten to learn a lot about the services that are provided, the different things that are provided for the community as far as health and wellness goes. And I've kind of gotten a glimpse into what that looks like for the city of Cedar Woolley as well as the whole district of 304, but it's really focused more in Cedar Woolley. And also my work in the social services area, working with the homeless population, really helps give me a lot of insight into working with people who have lower wages, people in poverty, homeless issues, as well as the fact that I work very collaboratively in my job with city and county governments. And so I really kind of have a unique perspective on the workings of all the different cities and how they can work together.
All right. Thank you. And then Councilman Kevin Loy, looks like you have a question for there. Or maybe that's already been asked. So why don't we hold off? So I have a question, Tina, for you. This will be your last question. As you may know, the term for this position ends this year. So do you plan to register in May to run for the Ward Three position, or are you just looking to fill this term out?
Again, that's an excellent, that's an excellent question. I think that I would very much consider running and putting my name in in May. You know, I've, I ran for city council four years ago. Brenda, who I really, I like her, she's a great person, beat me and that was okay. But I am very much interested in holding a seat in the city council, so I would very likely be putting my name in to run.
All right. Okay, thank you. All right. Then moving on to, thank you, Tina. Moving on to Waits. Richard, welcome. And again, you will have three minutes to share what you'd like to say, make a statement before the council.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for this opportunity to join the Cedar Woolley City Council. My experience is dealing with work, workers' rights, and the ability to provide workers with livable wage. And also the vice president of my union and I'm the shop steward in my store. I worked at Hagan's for 20 years. And I'm on the Northwest Washington CLC, Central Labor Council, as the, one of the top three officers. So my history with working with different people and come from all, all different backgrounds of work, coming together to find the better for a whole, as the whole. I've been selected to be on our bargaining committee where I represent the Hagan Grocery Store company as a whole and, you know, come together as a small, small independent grocery store in the fight with all the big stores and the people. I've been elected for five different terms to represent the people I work with and they've reelected me because they feel that I've represented them at the table and everybody has different issues, but as you, if you can come together as a whole and for the greater good of everything would, is how I've been all my life. And in the Army, I worked as a representative for all the soldiers that lived in the barracks and didn't live off base and, you know, just work with upper management and, you know, to provide a whole better living situation. And with the CLC, you do, you different labor unions come together and you, you know, you, you bring your, your, your advice or what you believe into this room and hash it out and work together as a whole for the greater good. So that's what I was, my experiments would bring to the city council and I would look forward to the opportunity.
All right. Thank you. And again, we have five questions that we will ask of you. And I will begin with Councilman Kevin Loy.
Okay, so we got five questions. Like I said, I'm, I'm kind of confused which question I'm supposed to ask.
Why don't you start with one?
Okay. Which I kind of screwed up here. I apologize. Okay, why do, the one I got is why do you want to serve on the city council?
I feel it's my civic duty to give back to the community as, working with the high school basketball team over the years. We, you know, started out with 70 kids coming through K through three and almost doubled that number. So we can provide an environment for Cedar Woolley youth to thrive in the city and not have to leave the city to go participate in sports and just general stuff, working with high school and involving the high school students in other issues that the city has to, you know, keep the generations going and involve them early. And like for baseball, there's not a field for, the right size field for the middle, middle age kids. So some kids are leaving the city to go play somewhere else and there's just to work with the city council and to make the community better as a whole.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Brendan McGoughan, question two.
Hi, thank you, Richard. My question is, what experiences, talents, or skills do you bring to the council and community that you would like to highlight?
Well, working with a bargaining unit in my union, we've been able to reach out to senators. We bargain for good contracts and then if we don't get good contracts, then we go to the city and the state and see how we can use the state and city funds to win a better contract as a whole, like for example, minimum wage or sick time, sick pay, or scheduling issues. So it's my skills with working with local and state officials to help, help out the situation would be, I think, I could bring that to the city council. Like example, for the library, get funding, you know, just different funding that the state offers and be a good voice that I've worked with the last 15 years in getting stuff done outside the city to help us as a whole.
All right. Thank you, Richard. Councilman Chuck Owen, question three.
Are there any regional issues or forums which you have particular interest or expertise such as transportation, human services, physical management, solid waste parks, open spaces, and et cetera?
Yeah, for like the parks, I would work with parks to, you know, improve fields. Like they've done a great job. As a community grows, I was passionate about getting, making space available for youth to thrive in a healthy environment in the city so they could stay home and play, play in the city instead of leaving the city to work. And just infrastructure, just using the state as much as we could to improve the city.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Glenn Allen, question four. Um, Glenn, you're muted.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Richard, I'm a, I'm a big neighborhood proponent. In District Four, there's a lot of neighborhoods, not as many apartments and stuff. What's your feeling on keeping neighborhoods more traditional in Cedar Woolley? Because I think it's a very big lure to bring in people that are moving here because they like that setting. So anyway, your question or thoughts on it?
Yeah, like I agree with the neighborhood. That's one of the reasons I moved to Cedar Woolley is because there's available spaces for, to thrive and, which brings more people into the community. And just having the hometown feel like Cedar Woolley does and make more spaces for every, every kind of individual or groups that would want to live in a community. I'm the POS officer for District Three, Ward Three, precinct officer, and it's always, you want the community to grow and still maintain that livable feeling.
And then again, same question that I asked Tina. As you are aware, this term, this position is up the end of this year. And I am curious as to whether or not you plan on running for this position or if you're just looking to fill this position till the end of its term.
Oh, I realize that the term is almost up and that's a given that I would continue to keep working and run for the same position and, you know, grow with the council and learn and yes, that'd be great. I know how to run and I know that that's coming up because I work on the, in my union and the CLC on political and endorsements and stuff. So I've been through training to run a campaign and help through the process.
Okay, thank you. And you can sit back and relax now. Thank you very much, Richard. And we will move on to Sarah. Good evening, Sarah Diamond. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you. So same format. I'll give you three minutes to make a statement to the council and then we will take turns asking questions.
Okay. I'm Sarah Diamond. I've been a resident here for over 20 years. I am a working mother. And I have really come to love this community. I've been fully involved in youth sports and organizations. I've served on the Little League Board as well as been a coach. I've been a private instructor as well as a instructor for select organizations over the years, getting to know families and the youth and what, what could be necessary and used here in the city to help draw people in for youth sports, to help provide a place for the children to play and to draw in people from outside to come in and play as well. Serving on the Little League, I was a part of the state tournament and putting together and working with the city and the local businesses. That event was quite the, quite the event and it brought a lot of people in and it went over really well. I worked with the food bank to help get them involved and create kind of a volunteer program with them. We used a lot of their volunteers at our, the games and tournaments and in turn it brought awareness to the food bank, which turned out to be a really great relationship. And my overall background really is in sales, marketing, and project management. I've done a lot of that in international and domestic project management in logistics, as well as working at a local law office here in Cedar Woolley periodically throughout the past 20 years or so. So I do have a background in reading legal documents, writing legal documents, preparing them in open space, property issues, settlements and disputes and that sorts of stuff as well that you might be looking at or needing to review and consider when you're looking at annexing in areas into the city and working hand in hand with the city planning commission.
Okay, thank you. So again, we will do the questions and it looks like I will begin here with Councilman Carl DeYoung.
Am I muted now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. Pardon me as I'm working through some technology today. So Ms. Diamond, welcome back. I am asking an economic development question. Based upon your background and experience, how would you improve the base workforce here in Cedar Woolley? From, to how would you ensure that we are working to a higher standard for good wages, good benefits, and good jobs? Thank you.
Ultimately, we really need to support our local businesses and nurture them to grow and we need to bring in new business. Anytime you can create a good, healthy business and industry, you're going to create wages and you're going to create jobs. And that's really what we need to do is provide wages, livable wages for members here in our community and a place where they can live and work, not have to commute somewhere else where they're spending their, their money, going out to lunch somewhere else, they're driving and all of that time that's taking away from their families and their financial budget as they're making those adjustments. We need to try to, try to keep people here in the city happy and, and healthy economically and financially. And I really think that that's, that's in trying to develop industry. If you look back 50 years ago, that's what we had and we were doing really well. And there's definitely a transition as we've gone from timber to technology, completely different industries with completely different wage bases. And we've also got our small, you know, our small businesses with different wage bases. So we kind of have to look at it at the big picture there and, and kind of figure out what kind of new businesses that we can look to bring in here that are going to create those sorts of jobs and for the, the people that we have in this community.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to Councilwoman Joellen Kestie, I think it's question two. I've lost track.
Okay, so I'll ask, why do you want to serve on the city council?
I want to serve on the city council because I want to give back. I want to take a lot of my professional background and apply it to the community that I live in. I want to be a part of that. I want to see, really see our community grow. It's growing. That's completely inevitable. But I don't want it to lose the small town feel either. I want families to be able to walk the streets, kids be able to walk to school without having to worry. I want a safe, healthy, thriving environment for families to live in, to work in, and to thrive in. And I want the children to grow up remembering those memories and they might go off to college, but hey, they're going to come back because this is where they, their family built a great life and this is where they want to come back and, and have their families and build a great life as well. And, and that's really what that small town home feel is. And I don't want to see that go away and I really want to, to, to work towards that.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Kevin Loy, I believe you have question two.
What experiences, talents, or skills do you bring to the council and community that you would like to highlight?
Well, I am, I'm a self-starter. I'm a team player and I'm extremely motivated. I have never left a task undone. I am completely detail oriented and I would really love to be a part of the growing community and, and helping in, in providing and listening to the people, the community, the businesses in what they need and what they're looking for. So I would love, love to use my professional skills that I have in, in sales and marketing and developing, developing and growing businesses. One of the things I used to do in my sales and marketing was working with Fortune 500 companies in developing promotional marketing plans and, and how they can bring people in, draw people in, and increase their foot traffic in their business and their return on investment. And I would like to be able to take some of that in my professional career and apply it to the community that I live in and, and try to help this community grow and build and, and provide some sort of foundation in, in helping them in through this economic situation that we're in right now. I mean, there's going to be long-term effects with COVID, the, the shutdowns, the people that have been out of work and those sorts of things. And I really think we need to foster that, nurture it and really help them out.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Brendan McGoughan, question three.
Okay. Are there any regional issues or forums in which you have a particular interest or expertise such as transportation, human services, or parks?
Okay. I have not been involved in any of those, to be really honest with you. I have been involved slightly in parks, parks and development in the position on the school or on the Cedar Woolley Little League Board. We've had discussed and I know it's been in the works since the 90s, assisting with putting in a recreational field for, for softball and baseball. That would be a great foundation to bring people in and to help support some, some of the community members where their kids have a safe place to go play. So I've been, I've been a small part of that. But no, I have not been a part of anything in regards to parks and transportations or social development.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Chuck Owen, question four.
Do you want to serve on the city council because of the particular issue on which you want to work? Are, are you interested more broadly distributed?
My interests are more broadly distributed. I would like to honestly be a part of a little bit of everything, but one of the things that I would really like to see in the community is, is a lot more community involvement and being a part of something that's going to allow that. So not only in fostering and helping these businesses, but I want to be a part of creating kind of a circle of life as, as you might think. For example, a part of, you know, whether you're a part of assisting with the food bank or assisting with Meals on Wheels or assisting with other local organizations that's going to help the community in creating programs that are going to be sustainable and, and provide them with a circle of life, providing programs that are going to reach out to the youth in Little League organizations where we can take those organizations and put them and partner them and foster a relationship with other areas of the community that might need help. So if you compare the youth with a aging community and, and kind of tie them together, you can kind of create a circle of life. You're giving the youth a chance to get to know some of the people in the community that they may have never had before. You're giving them a chance to volunteer and help some of these people and learn from them and listen to their stories and who they are and what, you know, what kind of circumstances or what kind of backgrounds they may have come from because everybody, we all have different backgrounds. We all have different reasons. We are the way we are and who we are. And I think really allowing some of the youth and creating programs that would kind of partner some of them together allows the opportunity for, for everybody to learn just a little bit more about other people in their community, who they are, and it'll overall give them a greater respect. And, and I think that that would be a great thing and it not only will help those, those people on, on all spectrums as individuals, but it will also help to keep those organizations running and functioning. And especially right now in a time where it's needed.
Okay, thank you. And I have just the one question that I presented both to Richard and also to Tina, and that is the term is up at the end of this year and I'm curious as to whether or not you plan on running again, or if you're just interested in filling the term until the end of the year.
Absolutely. I would plan on running. I, I will continue to be residing here.
All right. Thank you. That, that wraps up the Q and A. The time right now is 6:35 and the council is going to go into, we're going to adjourn and go into executive session pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 1H. And we're going to discuss the qualifications of the candidates and executive session, executive session is expected to last about 15 minutes. If it's taking longer than that, I will come back out and let you know how much longer we will be. And my hope is that we will reconvene then at 6:50. So no action is to be taken in, in the executive session and the final voting and the appointment will be done in open session when we return. So council, I will see you in the next room. So council, I will see you in the next room. It looks like, are we all here? Have to look around my little camera to see the some of some people's faces. Okay, so I want to begin first. I call this meeting back into order and it is 6:50, 6:51 actually. And we had quite a good discussion. It was a very healthy discussion while we were in executive session. So I want to thank you for, I want to thank the candidates. I want to thank Tina and Richard and Sarah for being here tonight for your willingness to serve within this community. You know, you're to be commended and I already know that you're all involved within the community. So for that, we are all very, very grateful. And it makes our community that much richer. So with that, I am going to call for nominations and
Madam Mayor.
Yes?
This is Councilmember DeYoung. I move the nomination of Richard Waits.
Okay. Are there other nominations?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to nominate Sarah Diamond.
Other nominations?
I second Sarah.
Is there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go in the order of the nominations that were given. Councilman DeYoung nominated Richard Waits. Is there a second? Okay, hearing none, I will move on to the second nomination. Councilwoman Joellen Kestie nominated Sarah Diamond and that was seconded by Councilman Kevin Loy. So I'm going to call for a vote and I'm going to go by name so that I know for sure how many people are voting. So Councilman Glenn Allen, are you a yes or a no?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councilman DeYoung, are you a yes or a no?
No.
Councilman Joellen Kestie, I'm taking you as a yes.
Yes.
Councilman Kevin Loy, I am also addressing you as a yes. Councilman Brendan McGoughan, are you a yes or a no?
Yes.
And Councilman Chuck Owen, are you a yes or a no? I think you were muted. Councilman Chuck Owen, is that a yes or a no? Chuck, you're still muted? Okay, he's a yes. Okay. So I have five yeses and one no. So congratulations, Sarah Diamond. You are our Ward Three Council member. And again, I want to thank Richard and I want to thank Tina. I very much appreciate you being here tonight and appreciate all the work that you're doing in the community. You have huge respect for me. And I, you know, I know you're going to be successful in in other things that you're doing and appreciate all the things you already are doing. So thank you for being here tonight. So Sarah, thank you. Sarah, if you want to hold up your right hand, I will swear you in. And repeat after me. I, Sarah Diamond.
I, Sarah Diamond.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And all local ordinances.
And all local ordinances.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the office of Councilmember Ward Three.
Of the office of Councilmember Ward Three.
For the city of Cedar Woolley, Skagit County, Washington.
For the city of Cedar Woolley, Skagit County, Washington.
According to the law and to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the law and the best of my ability and understanding.
All right. Congratulations, Sarah, and welcome.
Thank you.
So we do have a form that we'll need you to sign. So if you kind of want to hang on after I adjourn, I can give you some information and we can set up a time for you to come in and and get your paperwork and sign needed documents. All right?
That sounds great.
All right. Council members, I want to thank you very much. I know that this was a difficult and challenging decision, but you know, you you worked through it and I want to thank you for that. So if there is nothing for the good of the order, we are adjourned. Thank you.